Call the order this Monday, March 13th meeting of the Montpelier Planning Commission. First we have to approve the agenda and I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, motion by John, give me a second. You can do it.
I'll second.
Second from Brian. Okay, those in favor of approving the agenda say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, agenda approved. Comments from the chair. So yeah. So Zach Watson, who's putting together the project on Northfield Street for Habitat for Humanity, had reached out to Gabe and I this past week, talking about his interest in doing a neighborhood development area, apparently to get funding. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain in a second. To get funding though, this is the thing that really stands out about these things. Developers sometimes need, especially like, like a Habitat-type project where they're looking for grants. They need to be in some kind of development area type thing to, to qualify or, or just really helps their applications. So what these are, it's like, John just told me this existed for a few years. Before that, I was under the impression it had been around shorter than that. But the, a city or a developer can apply to have an area outside of a growth center be called a neighborhood development area. And the, and this is through the state and the benefits of that are cheaper Act 250 applications. I think some exemptions to land gains tax, just like general stuff that the, the state offers for, for saving money. But for a really big project that's, that's in the multimillions, these fees can be in the millions. And so like these, these neighborhood development areas can actually save a ton of money. And like I said before, they can help people get access to funding. Montpelier does not have one. I, I, I'm gonna read Mike's mind and say that we were probably going to cover this when we got to the chapter on the land use plan or, or on, on land use for our city plan. But the reason I'm bringing it up is since an application process takes a while, we might wanna get the ball rolling on an application process for identifying some neighborhood development areas. And maybe, and, and you know, a lot of the technical sides, you know, Mike, you tell us like how you wanna handle it. I'm assuming that one of the first things we'll have to do is like as a city identify where we would like to put them. One place would be around the development that Habitat's proposing, Habitat for Humanity's proposing around Northfield Street. That's a walkable place. We changed the zoning so that, so that development could happen there. And but there's probably gonna be a couple other places, I would think, too. So yeah, so I thought I'd bring that up and then I'll hand it over to everybody else, Mike and everyone. Yeah, I think John just sent us a link. You can, you can easily pull up some background info on these things. Another, another thing I was gonna ask everybody is should we have someone come in and talk about, about this? My understanding is Josh that works with you, Mike, has some background on this. So maybe he could be a person.
He's done one. It's, uh, it's, it's not complicated. What I looked at, the reason why I looked at it this last week was because I wanted to make sure that, because we were assembling a new revision to our, you know, another zoning amendment. So we've, we'll talk about it later in the meeting, but I looked it up because I wanted to make sure that we identified any little details, if there was something that was gonna be required in an application for an NDA, if we needed that in the zoning, we should make sure as we're working on the zoning that we've got that ready to go. So, so I was just trying to look ahead for that piece. And what I realized is we're pretty, we, we've got all the pieces we need to get approved for a number of these areas. The issue that comes up is really what we want to apply it to. Because as John mentioned, it is, it does apply to the growth center and that is one of the districts we want to amend with Country Club Road. So Saban's pasture is in our growth center. But the Country Club is not. We would not be able to put the Country Club Road parcel into the NDA. There are two, two ways of having an NDA. One is within a half a mile of the existing designated downtown. And the other one is it's gotta be part of a growth center and it can be both. Our property out there is too far away to get from the designated downtown to be included in option A, so it would have to be part of option B. And we, if, if we wanna use any of those NDA special rules, maybe it doesn't make a difference for the Country Club Road property. But if it does, then we'll probably have to do the NDA after we've amended our growth center boundary. But.
Or do we know, do we know if, like, let's say we do three NDAs, one of them involves the Country Club. Would that be all in the same application or we do multiple applications?
I think we'd probably want to try to do it with, with one. We could do it with more than one. I'd, I'd have to talk to somebody at the state probably to go through and find out what they would recommend. I haven't talked to anyone at the RPC and I haven't talked to anyone at the state specifically about what might be the, you know, the recommended path. I would think it'd probably be under one application, but maybe they, maybe they'll tell me it doesn't matter.
I do, I do think there's language in it that does allow you to extend it beyond the, the half mile if it's consistent with the goals of 4302 and that there are, you know, natural constraints limiting development around. And it's a logical extension of, you know, our, our settlement pattern. And that it's adjacent to existing development. So may or may not be enough there for us to justify.
Wait for the Country Club? Yeah, okay. So what you're saying is extending the growth center first is probably the best option for that?
Yeah, and we'll have to see. So we're waiting. The Country Club Road master plan process is going on right now and they're hoping to get a decision in April. So my plan all along for doing an NDA application was to be looking this summer to putting together an application because then, you know, depending on the results, if, if the council and the public decides not to have a lot of housing at Country Club Road for whatever reason, then it wouldn't make sense to make it an NDA. We don't have to worry about the growth center and we can just move forward. My expectation is it's probably gonna have a lot in, but then, and then the question is, is there value to it? I would think there is, even though it's a city-owned property, it is, we aren't doing the development. So we're gonna be selling those lots. So the housing that gets developed isn't gonna be developed by the city of Montpelier. It's gonna be developed by either for-profit housing in some cases. It may be nonprofit housing in some cases, but it's gonna be properties that we're gonna be selling those parcels off. And those Act 250 exemptions and cost savings would probably be something that those entities would be, you know, appreciative of us getting that done. So my sense is the timing of this is gonna probably be get, get the master plan done, do a growth center amendment and then move into a NDA application, which I don't think will take long. I think they're fairly quick applications once you've got all of your pieces together. So that would be my sense on the, on the timing of that. And I know that doesn't entirely work with Zach's schedule, but.
My understanding is that, that they're, they're not going to get that project going until next year. So maybe if, if we, if we do get our things done without too much delay, that maybe it would work for, for Habitat. Like if they, if, if they need it, if they need us to have it done by next year, if we, you know, that seems possible that we, maybe we get our application in the fall. Does that sound reasonable to you, Mike?
Yeah, that would be my expectation. I mean, I, I think especially with Country Club Road, we're trying to, you know, we wanna be, you know, trying to break ground by next spring. So if we're gonna be doing that, we've got to get, as I mentioned in the past, you know, I break things into three pieces. We got planning, preparation, and then implementation, plan, prepare, implement. And we're in the planning part and we're gonna very quickly, at the end of, hopefully, you know, May, sometime in May, that the council will make the final decision, May, June, we'll have a final decision on what the plan is, what are we gonna do? And then we're gonna move into the preparation pieces, which is gonna be all of these, are we doing TIF? Is Project TIF an option? We'd love to see Project TIF or a new TIF district an option. The growth center, NDAs, zoning changes, because that's all zoned rural, we're gonna have to rezone that. And we're gonna, you know, the zoning changes I'll be talking about later are really, we'll have a conversation and then when we have the information from the master plan, we're gonna add that on. We're not gonna have our public hearing on the zoning amendment until we've got those Country Club Road changes. And then, you know, again, that's another set of things. And then do we need Act 250 permits? Do we need local permits? That's all in the preparation piece. So hopefully by next spring, we've got everything lined up. We're ready for any bond votes that we may need next town meeting day. So in 2024, we can move into construction and that's our, that's our plan. So yeah, if, if he's waiting till next year, he'll be, he'll, you know, we should have all those changes done because it's gonna be front-loaded with the Country Club Road project.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that sounds great. That sounds really great. I think staying on schedule obviously is the, the key there. Do you need anything from us about the NDAs? Like, do you think that it would make sense for the Planning Commission to take a stab at having some recommended, recommendations for city council on some areas to target with that? Or? I don't know.
I, I think when we do the, when we, and you mentioned it a couple minutes ago, the, the land use plan for the city plan, that this is where these conversations come right up and we should have the conversations of, you know, what designations make sense in what area based on what our goals are. So the, the NDA is really about developing new neighborhoods, even though they call it neighborhood. You know, it, it tends to have rules that could really overlay over existing neighborhoods. For the most part, it's about new neighborhoods. So these areas like Northfield Street, like Country Club Road, like Saban's pasture, like Crestview, which is over by Terrace Street. These are all very logical places that I would expect to have a, an NDA overlay.
Okay, that sounds good then. That's, we'll put our two cents in when it comes to land use plan. And, and get the ball rolling, like you said. Okay. Does anybody else have any more questions about the NDA issue? It's an unfortunate acronym. God, Maria.
Question about the, um, cause I was looking at the website that somebody sent us. And the whole idea is to promote growth within like a walkable distance of the downtown. And it seems like the Country Club, I mean, especially if you're talking like not eagle, eels flying distance, like actual getting to and from the downtown. It's actually quite far. It might be like three miles, right? To get from downtown Montpelier on a road up to the Country Club.
So yeah, and it, it is part of, so that's one piece of it. The other one is the growth centers, areas that you expect to have a lot of growth. So I think this, it, it'll make more sense if the development, and we'll see where the master plan goes. If the master plan talks about a lot of housing, then we're gonna need a second access. And this is gonna lead to a discussion of, you know, building in a, taking an official map and making an official map to show roads that are gonna go all the way through Saban's pasture and back down. Or, and/or all the way across to VCFA. So there's a, a space where the parking is that we could connect a road across to. We would have to go through a planning process and have a process to build a road through. And then Country Club Road is not as far away as, as it is now because now you've got to go all the way down to River Street, all the way up to the roundabout. So it gets a little bit shorter.
But even still, I mean, if there is a road through Saban's pasture to the Country Club, like what is that distance? It seems like it's still over a mile from the downtown.
It would probably be a mile, but it would be within the growth center. So and if you were to add the amount of development that is potential in, so we've got in, in Montpelier right now in the entire city, we have about 4,000 housing units. It's been estimated we could put 1,000 housing units between, you know, Saban's pasture and Country Club Road. It could be, you know, anywhere from a couple hundred up to 1,000 at, at the most. So it really is a major extension of the downtown and the community if we were to build out, you know, a couple hundred units on the lower Saban's pasture and then, you know, a couple hundred more out at the other end at the Country Club Road and then a certain number of units that are gonna be spread in between, you know, between those 300 acres or 200 acres that are out there. You know, there's gonna be a lot of conserved lands, a lot of other lands out there, but there'll, there'll be some housing potential. But that's up to what city council and the public come up with. It, it isn't direct. And we'll see what the, the downtown board says. We're gonna be applying. If the downtown board says no, it's not proximate to, and it's not a continuation of our downtown, then
Right.
then we move forward. We go through and say, okay, that, that would have been a benefit and would have made our project easier and would have made it more likely that we could make affordable housing. It just means we're gonna build housing that the owners of those housing units are gonna be having to absorb the costs of those developments. And that's, you know, that's just costs that get passed along to the buyer and it may make projects more unaffordable.
Right. I mean, what do, what do other people think? To me, the, I think the beautiful thing about Montpelier is it's centralized business district. You know, if we're, we're talking about expanding the city by 25%.
And we don't expect that over the short term. That's a long-term, that could take 15, 20 years to add that many units.
Be to a decentralized city, you know, having that many units so far from the city core. But what do other people think? I, I'm just curious of what everyone's kind of viewpoint is on that. Like all, housing is good. I think smart growth is also good.
I think we, we already have some housing development that's, that's like that. Up Bailey Street and then the neighborhoods are out that way. I think those were built in the 60s or 70s when sprawl was happening. And that's a big chunk of our housing already, which is not exactly walkable, but still, you know, in the city and it's a neighborhood. There's other ones across the river that are kinda like that. I see what you're saying. Yeah, it's not something I probably would have planned for. But I think as Mike was saying too, there's no guarantee that they're actually gonna take the housing route with the Country Club. That maybe that they'll, it'll be other amenities for the city.
It looks like it's, it's like it's maybe a mile from the, the co-op. Like a three quarters of a mile from the, from the edge of our, our growth center.
I mean, there is no, there's probably no perfect place to put housing in Montpelier. I, I don't know. I feel like if there's a housing crunch, we, we need more housing or I think that's what everyone wants to, that's part of our plan is to have affordable housing. Have housing, have it be affordable. I mean, I'm not saying put it anywhere, but there's only a few places we could put new housing from what I'm learning from you guys, from this, from this board, this commission. So I mean, I'm, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying we build it no matter what. I'm just saying I'd be willing to put it a little farther out if it's more units.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's better to put housing at the Elks Clubs than to put more housing in Calus or East Montpelier. You know, like all the people who come to Montpelier for services. So I think of it that way.
Yeah, as someone who lives a mile from downtown and can live without a car, no problem. I feel like my attitude has changed from when I lived in cities and considered like a quarter mile, you know, was the gold standard and, and, and yeah, maybe people can walk half a mile, but it look, a mile's not, not a huge deal. I think AOT is, is going to be, I think, releasing a study fairly soon, looking at mode and, and vehicle trips across Vermont using some interesting mobility data. And the, I think the, the like median walking trip for people traveling to work is about a mile in the state. So it doesn't seem, all the places where we can put housing, it seems like, it seems reasonable. I might not have always, wouldn't have always thought that, especially, I guess the question mark being like, you know, Saban's pasture, if it was like a logical extension of like a, some gridded neighborhoods that you had some, some nice like walkable ways to get into town, that would be, it seems like that would be a no-brainer, but you do have this, this large undeveloped piece. So yeah, I don't know. Just thinking out loud here.
Well, yeah, this is, this is all interesting. I guess the Country Club stuff's gonna just like be changing and we're gonna see. I don't, I don't even know how much wool we're gonna have in it. But we should move on with the agenda. So we do have some stuff we wanna get done. The next thing on the agenda was general business and I think we have a member of the public on Zoom with us. So now's the time for anyone to comment on anything that's not on the agenda. And we have visitor, the name on Zoom is Daniel Costin. So Daniel, if you have anything you'd like to bring up, this is your chance. I assume no one's there with you, Mike, in the room?
Uh, yeah. So, uh, thank you. I, I just wanted to check in on what you're doing. I live in the area close by where the Habitat for Humanity property is gonna go. And I'm just kind of keeping track of, you know, what the status of that project is. So I, I don't have any other comment, but, but thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Okay. Uh, yeah, we're not doing anything directly. I mean, you know, we did the zoning changes and we were just discussing how that area would make sense for a new, for a neighborhood development area, which is something that, that we would do through the state to allow development to be cheaper. Other than that, we're not doing a lot, but we, you know, I think as the Planning Commission, we see that area as an opportunity for housing growth because it's like we were just talking about, it's a, it's a walkable neighborhood to the downtown, which is what we're, what we want to, where we want to see housing happen.
Yes, and I, I would agree. And yeah, the, the part that's unclear to some in the neighborhood or is, you know, where the access to that property would be coming from. I don't know if that's been determined, but yeah.
Yeah, we, we, I mean, we were, we were told like how it might happen at the time, but we, you know, we didn't make that change based on a single project. So we didn't learn a lot about it. Mike, do you even have an application about any changes to roads or anything?
No, there would, there's some conversation going on now. That's why there was supposed to be a public hearing tonight. Um, the Habitat was hosting. That was why I kept having people coming in that I had to keep checking on. But the meeting got postponed because they're, they're addressing a couple issues with, with DPW before they can write their final report. And one of them is the, the steepness of the access road to the site. And the second is the intersection with Northfield Street. So those were two areas that needed to get some questions answered from DPW as to whether they were viable options or if they would need to go through and do some additional engineering to, to either move or adjust or come up with different intersection alignments or roads or whatever. So, but we don't have any of those answers.
Okay. And that's not been rescheduled for a fixed date as of yet?
Nope, not yet.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Sure, sure. Thanks for coming in.
Mike, do we have any idea like where the road is gonna come in? Cause it doesn't front on Northfield Street, right?
Uh, it does front on Northfield Street. Uh, it, there's, it's actually, it's part of a larger, it's, it's, it's a, it's a large parcel and it does actually connect down to Northfield Street. But I think the access is coming down, if you know where Dan Jones lives on Northfield Street, it's actually coming down partly on, uh, down the side of his property to intersect with Northfield Street. They were gonna, they were gonna need to purchase an easement, if I understood it correctly, to, to build an access down the, um, using some of Dan Jones' land. So it's, it's right near the, was it Derby Drive? It's near the Derby Drive intersection and that's been one of the issues. Is that it's near it, but it doesn't square with the intersection. And so the question for DPW is could we approve that if it's not squared? And that's where we, we think there's an issue that DPW does need to comment on. And they would either have to move up and purchase more of Dan Jones' land to square up the intersection to make a four-way intersection, which could then be, if it needed to, it could be managed with a light or whatever. Otherwise, it would have to move farther downhill to maybe square up with something else farther down the hill to put enough space between the two intersections that we don't end up with a State Street, East State Street type alignment that are really difficult in our high hazard locations. So we'll see, we'll see what the outcome is. I haven't been following the details of the Northfield project very specifically because it's mostly just in a planning step. Josh Jerome in my office has been managing the, the community development funds in that process. So it's still a planning, in the planning phase.
Thank you.
Alrighty. So moving on to the, the, the big, big stuff for tonight. Uh, we're gonna continue our discussion of the CNU recommendations. There's notes that I encourage folks to pull up on the Google Drive from last time. A quick recap is that we seem to be in agreement to recommend to remove the density caps in the design review district, uh, which was, which is a direct response to the number one suggestion from CNU. We decided to not adopt design standards for additional residential units. In other words, not amend our design review regulations because they did not seem to need those changes. Cause Mike pointed out the, you know, there were some factual misunderstandings in that section. And then further suggestion three, which is to clarify the process for incrementally adding residential units. We came up with our own way to incrementally add new units, which is to outside the designer view district, allow four units on each conforming building lot in the city. So those two big changes would work hand in hand where we're allowing more housing inside and outside the designer view district in different ways. And I, and I kept notes for the rationale. I assume that, you know, when we go to suggest this, Mike always does a memo up for a city council. Mike, at this point, maybe you could just use our notes to do your thing. One question for the Planning Commission could be that we, uh, we could write our own policy. Like Mike normally does like a technical type explanation. We could do a explanation. We could do a policy one to, um, supplement that, which maybe is not a bad idea in this case, since we're expecting, there might be some public pushback. So that's kind of where I'm thinking right now. But with that, I'm just gonna hand it over, like, do, is there anything more on this, the CNU letter that folks want to get at, or any more ideas out there that you want to kick around?
I just had a question. Um, somebody just happened to mention to me this weekend that the last one about the four units on any buildable lot, is that part of the housing omnibus bill? So if that passes, that would be state uh, standard anyway, or am I getting confused about that? Do you know, Mike? Just curious.
I think it depends on the language of the bill. Um, one is to make up to four units permitted uses, which we already do. But you wouldn't be able to put in four units unless you have the correct amount of density. And I think we had a conversation in hours that maybe you'd be allowed to have four units regardless of what your density is. Was one of our conversations. I don't know how it's worded in ours. So it would be slightly different than I think. I think what the state is saying is just turn them into permitted uses. You can't have quadplexes as conditionally uses. They would have to be permitted uses, but you'd still have to meet the density and the parking requirement. So if you don't have enough parking or you don't have enough density, then you can't do it.
Oh, okay. All right. That's helpful.
Mike, can you, can you tell us a little bit about the, the parking? So inside that design review district, you know, just going back through the notes, it talks about, you know, if, I mean, we, we've updated some of that and they misread some of it, right? So there's some confusion about what they're talking about, but that i- if we had good design review over parking as an example, right, that that would allow us to, to regulate in a different way. Um, I know that most of the downtown, we've eliminated parking requirements. Does that cover all of that design review district, or is there a part of that? That there's still parking requirements?
There's quite a lot of it that still has parking requirements. Uh, the design review district extends out through most of what would be Western Gateway, goes up through National Life. So National Life is in design review, um, and they have parking requirements.
Does our design review address, um, any standards for, for parking? I mean, it's just the straight standards of whatever goes with the zoning area.
Yeah, whatever goes with the, the zoning. I mean,
Is, is it possible to, I mean, I don't know what the appetite is for that, or are we just, you know, kicking over like a can of worms to talk about parking? It just seems like if we're gonna say, you know, all these other things, right, in terms of lifting density and everything else, that parking would be a key component of that.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head how many projects have been limited by the amount of parking. Um, I have, you know, from time to time known of projects that can't go forward because they don't have enough density. I don't know very many projects that get stopped because of parking, at least not parking as a result of the zoning. There may be projects where for, you know, financing reasons, they're, you know, they're kind of limited, that the, the, their banks won't loan to them because they don't have enough parking. Um, some big, larger multifamily. Um, you know, I'll think about like the transit center. That's why all the parking in the transit center, there are thirty-six parking spaces and there are thirty-six units. Actually, I think there might be forty parking spaces and thirty-six units. And that was because their financing required them to have one parking space for every dwelling unit, even though they're literally over a transit center in the downtown. But, um, that was a requirement of financing, not the requirement that we at the city imposed on them.
I just wonder if it allows people to think more creatively about what we might, we may not have seen it in the future, right, but we're expanding this area. I mean, am I the only one who thinks that this is worth talking about, or?
Uh, we've actually had these debates, um, two, three years ago, I think, um, we had some debates, uh, it was a totally different composition on the planning commission. Um, but I think there was like a majority of us that were in favor of changing the parking requirements, but we had two or three people who were not quite sold on at the time. Uh, so we, I don't think we ended up acting on it. Um, but yeah, we, we, we've had these debates about, about not having the parking requirements for residential units. Um, and, and we also made some changes some years ago to ease up on it a bit, right, Mike?
Ease them up a lot over the, the, the pre-two thousand eighteen zoning had, you know, a much more typical set of rules for, for parking. And with the new two thousand eighteen rules when they came in, they drastically cut them down. And, and allowed a lot of other things, like under the old zoning, every individual parking space had to have its own access out, so you couldn't block in any parking. Um, so there's a lot of rules like that. Now we say, you know, you've got to have parking. If you've got a sixty-foot driveway, you have three parking spaces. Sure, the front two people can't get out without somebody moving, but we still count that as three parking spaces. So if you've got a sixty-foot driveway and you've got a triplex, you're good. And how that gets managed is up to the landlord and the people who live there. And I'm sure they can sort it out, just as I did when I lived in Burlington, lived in downtown Burlington. We piled the cars into the driveway and just sack, stacked them in, depending on who had to get up earliest and get out first in the morning.
Um, so, so Gabe, to answer your question, I mean, for me, the only misgiving I would have is that it's not a direct response to the Congress for New Urbanism letter. But as a policy thing that we should do outside of that, um,
Well, they, they mentioned it a few times. They mentioned it as something that could be regulated by, um, by, you know, design review. And I don't, apparently our design review doesn't say anything about parking, so that, that won't be applicable. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just thinking like, again, we think of some of these larger buildings that will be included inside of this. You know, if this were to pass, you know, the city council, right? Now all of a sudden, we've got some buildings that maybe can have, you know, a fourplex or five or whatever, cause there's no density requirements. But they can't because they don't have the parking, but they're, you know, on Bailey, or they're, you know, they're like right, they're walking distance to everything, right? But we're gonna tie them all up because uh, they only have a driveway where two cars could be parked, you know, I just, I just wonder about some of that. If we're gonna lift this other stuff, doesn't it make sense that if we're saying, if the argument is, hey, we're, we're not gonna follow all of their recommendations because we feel like we like our design review process, but we can, we do feel comfortable that it's good enough to lift density. Does parking come up in that conversation? But anyway, I'll, I'll stop talking about it, cause it doesn't look like anybody else is that interested, so.
I think, I think there's something there. It makes sense, or, um, e- especially if we're thinking of it from like a design perspective, like are there things that we can include around? Like CNU just doesn't want us to start paving everyone's front yard to put parking, you know, everywhere. And, and I don't think anyone wants that, right? So, yeah, getting rid of, I mean, I've been advocating to get rid of our parking requirements for almost a decade now. I think like, or, the number one question I ask anytime we do anything is what, um, like what public good, or like, what is the reason we're doing this? What is like the, how is this in the public good? And I don't understand how forcing somebody to create a, a space or a home for a large vehicle, which they may or may not have, is in the public interest. We're, we're, we want to be like a net zero community. We're trying to design like walkable downtowns. We've been talking about, you know, transportation as a service, transportation, like the, the future of transportation is going to change, yet yet we require anyone who wants to build anything to have a home for a car in addition to the home for the person. When like, we know at least what ten to fifteen percent of households in the city ha- don't have a car, it's really bizarre. I would get off my, my soapbox now and, and, and just say like, yes, I guess I, I am interested. And there probably is maybe uh, a complimentary design approach to that could, could address some of the CNU comments.
I, I think now that Gabe mentioned the word parking, I searched the document, parking is mentioned in the doc, document kind of indirectly, but there might be enough of a hope there, where I could feel honest about saying that a parking change is a response to what CNU is saying. So what do other folks think and what would be a hypothetical parking change that we would want to do?
I, I am all in on this conversation too, Gabe. I think you're just doing a good job of saying it. I didn't need to weigh in. You know, I completely agree that if someone's building a building downtown, requiring them to use part of that to house cars is not creating the kind of community that is attractive or that even is historically accurate with the rest of downtown. Yes, I think I, I also agree about the parking requirements.
So I will add, there is one, when we get to the, um, outlining of the zoning changes, this, this came up completely separately. So within our waiver provisions, if you've got a commercial use, you can get a waiver for the, some of your parking requirements if you provide bicycle facilities. But that only extends to commercial development. And so there was a request that said, you know, why shouldn't we? I mean, it's a waiver, you're not automatically getting it, but at least you should be allowed to ask if you provide bicycle facilities, couldn't you get a waiver for residential developments as well? So that's one of the recommendations that's, that is in there, is just to give some additional flexibility to the DRB to be able to go and say, yeah, you don't need all the parking requirements because you're located near transit, you're located near the bike path, you're providing bicycle facilities, you don't need to.
I mean, could we do the same thing as that? I know we're talking about a broader uh, application later, but just inside the design review district, could we say you can apply for a waiver? Right? If you have adequate, you know, and then it's case by case, right? Oh, you live, you know, a block from the Capitol. Yes, you can have a waiver, right?
So this, this proposal would be for any, anywhere. And I also wanted to point out, we do have design requirements for parking and for parking lots. It's just not in the design review standards. It's in the parking standards. So you can't park, parking lots in front. You can't put parking in front of the front face of the building. There's a, a number of rules that you do have to meet for parking lots and parking. It's just not into the design review. And the same with this waiver. It would not be in the design review district. Anyone could apply for the waiver. It just may not make sense if somebody's, you know, way out in, you know, out at the end of Terrace Street, at the edge of, you know, um, Middlesex, if they wanted to get a waiver for parking, you might be like, okay, I mean, you can apply, but you, you're gonna have a little bit tougher argument, cause there's no transit out there, there's no bike paths out there. Um, you know, maybe they award it, maybe they don't based on what, what the requirement is. But still, there's only one parking space required for each car, for each dwelling unit.
Does, does the, the parking like location and stuff, does that only kick in with site plan or conditional use?
No, it's, we couched ours under general standards for that reason. So that way parking does apply. Parking standards do apply even for single-family homes and duplexes.
So it seems like that's like a, a, that in effect is a design standard that applies like across the town, right?
Yeah, yep. And that's what I was trying to say, just not as clearly as you just put it there. It's, it, we do have the design standards that applies to all parking everywhere. Um, it's just not in the design review per se. The DRC won't review it. There are no design review standards through the DRC committee that they would be reviewing.
I mean, if we know that we're gonna put it through later in the year, and there'll be public debate along with all the rest of the changes, do we just hold off on it? Knowing that we want to see this waiver process, but it's gonna be for the whole city.
Yeah, I mean, if you're dividing this into two pieces, one being this, the CNU AARP recommendations, which I assume whatever you come out with is eventually gonna merge with my zoning changes amendment. Um, you know, at some point, we're gonna bring these together to go through and say, these are the zoning changes we're gonna recommend. Some of them came out of CNU AARP, some of them came out of our process in the, the planning office or whatever else you or the public has mentioned.
I think, I think, I think it might be a good idea, though, to present the, it, it can be all at the same time, but I think we should present them separately, if you know what I mean. Just because the city council had asked us to come back with a response to the letter, so. Uh, just, just, just for the sake of clarity, and, and I think it will help also get those changes through if city council easily sees, oh, these are the things that ARP and CNU wanted us to do. Um, right, so it seems like we're, the planning commission's not entirely on her own when it comes to, to that part. So, um, I think it's good to to keep it separated, even, even if we're doing it at the same time. Do we have a parking fix? Well, okay, uh, uh, okay, before I set up, yeah, go ahead, Maria.
I mean, I think, so going back to requiring the parking, the parking authority in firsting all family homes. Um, I don't understand, I guess like, I live on East State Street. I'm thinking of Terrace Street, which you just brought up. Um, but why? Why does a single-family home need to have a parking spot? There's on-street parking up and down the streets, you know, like, and then on each state street, I purposely park my car on the street because I think it slows cars down. Otherwise, they're going down our street thirty-five miles per hour. But if my car is on the street, they're slowing down to get around it. And so I do it as a safety measure, cause my kids are playing on my front yard, you know? So I don't understand these requirements to have a parking spot off-road, even on Terrace Street. It seems like that's like prime on-street parking up there. Um, I don't know. So I don't, I, maybe I still understand the purpose of these rules.
The rules are, this is, um, this is not me advocating, but, but the best reasons for the rules I've ever heard were that it makes renters provide parking, or else a tenant takes a place and then realizes they've got nowhere to put their car. And depending on where it is, it could be a place where the on-street parking is competitive and, and so that, that renters feel like they have no, you know, they, they have, they have all these parking issues in their lives, which I say that, but then I don't feel like that's super compelling because uh, it's like the perfect thing for the market to take care of. I mean, if, if having a good parking spot's important to you, then you would should look for that. And I understand that most people aren't economist brains and thinking about that necessarily when they're looking at apartments. So I, I get that, but still, it's like a market thing where if the city's not requiring it, then the landlords that are offering parking, that's a um, you know, worth something perhaps. Um, and the ones that aren't means that the place should maybe not uh, you know, have the same, about, same value. It just seems like the kind of thing that would work itself out to the market.
And I think there's this, this misconception, like people want, they're like, wow, people should have a place to park their car. And it's like, yeah, that makes some sense, but this doesn't create any additional parking. It just stops new housing from coming in. Like a parking requirement does not make more parking. It just makes it harder to, to build things and potentially just stops that, so.
I, I, I completely agree, because there's plenty of on-street parking on my street at all times, you know? So there is no, I mean, I can see like maybe on River Street, you know, like these kind of streets that don't have on-street parking. But like, most of the single-family homes, I think there's probably plenty of parking on the street in front of them.
I think we have around a hundred acres of off-street parking as well in our downtown.
And I mean, the, the one thing I'll point out is, you know, when I got here in two thousand fourteen, the rules still were, and it wasn't, you know, for a couple of years after that, the rules still were, and it wasn't, you know, for a couple of years after that, between November 1st and April 15th, there was no on-street parking. So having no, you would have no place to park your car between those months. So that's one of the reasons you'd find a lot of these things. You have to have at least a parking space for one car. You know, if you don't have a car, great, you don't have to plow your driveway, but the chances are good, you're gonna have, most people are gonna have one car. And between these months, there's no on-street parking because of the snow. Then that didn't change till maybe 2016, 17, that they wanted to try to help the renters out. And they went to, they went through a series of different parking options to let people stay, continue to park on street. A little bit like Burlington where you can stay on the street till the sign comes up, and then you've got to have everybody off so you can remove the snow. The most recently, we've got the alternate side parking, so that way they can clear snow on the alternate days. But it very much could go back in a couple of years to go right back to, no, we're going to go back to no, to reinstating the parking ban. But that was just, that's probably, you know, that's a reason why you would have these rules is because there is no on-street parking for five months of the year.
You know, I guess just circling back to the beginning of the conversation, I I feel like looking at the notes that you took, Kirby, I think that could be the basis of a memo. And knowing that maybe at the same time we're submitting this, that we're also going to have some other changes, right, that will be, that will include a waiver process for, you know, parking requirements. Man, I feel I feel pretty good about that. That'd be, I mean, that'd be pretty great if we get that stuff through.
Okay, so so, yeah, I'm I'm a little fuzzy on like, like when we debated this before, I want to say that we wanted to do away with parking requirements for like residential properties or residential properties of a certain size. So so I mean, the the question is like, you know, like the 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 fix, what I'm fuzzy on is like what fix we want. So Gabe, it sounds like you like the the waiver route as opposed to um, just doing away with the requirement for all or a portion of.
I mean, I support doing away with all of it, but the the fact is that we already have the our professional planners recommending a waiver process. And again, there probably are projects like, oh, if we built massive housing out in the Elks Club, they probably have some parking for those people, just saying, because I think it is a little outside of a normal walk for a lot of people.
Yeah, and I wasn't saying that we we shouldn't propose it. We have in the past proposed other other neighborhoods. I think we had actually when residential 15 went through 1500, the parking exemption went through. That was something the council had thrown in after we had, I think, tried to eliminate parking in Riverfront. Think we had picked like Riverfront, mixed-use residential and residential 1500. And there were a bunch of, there's an outcry. And one of the counselors happened to live in a residential 1500 neighborhood and said he wanted to get that put in. And so the other two were nixed, but this one was left in. So we have tried in the past to add more neighborhoods. And, you know, I think I've said in the past, as as you get farther out to get in and get into places where there aren't, there isn't on-street parking, I don't see any reason why we need to regulate parking. So I think Maria mentioned River Street. No on-street parking in River Street. I don't know why we need to regulate it at all. If the market will regulate how how much parking to build and how much building to build, depending on what that particular, you know, use is trying to do, and they'll they will maximize their their use of that land because they can't externalize those burdens onto the neighborhood. Other places that have on-street parking, you've got a little bit more of a discussion. Some neighborhoods, there's on-street parking, but it's not an issue. There's plenty of on-street parking and others like Berry Street. It's a significant, it's it's pretty tight parking. So adding, you know, a bunch more housing, you know, and having all that housing drop that additional parking into the on-street just makes it that much harder for those folks who are already trying to park on street. I mean, you just think about where some of the Boston neighborhoods and fights go on for on-street parking. And and it's just a policy. That's not necessarily good or bad. It can be, well, let let everybody fight it out and let the market sort it sort it out. But those people talk to counselors. Everyone who's got a car and is in a bad spot on Berry Street is going to talk to their counselor, and that's how it gets back around to kind of killing some of the proposals.
Okay, so it sounds like our plan is when we take up the other zoning changes, we'll take up Mike's waiver suggestion, the suggestion, the right word, Mike, you'll be suggesting a waiver. Okay. Sounds good. Thanks for bringing it up, Gabe. I think there's a lot of supporters of easing up the parking here, so. It's good. Uh, do we want to do anything else with the CNU stuff?
I had a question about that. Oh, I'm sorry, is somebody else? We were, Ariane and Mike were talking before about the four unit or allowing four units per site. And under what we are proposing is that four units despite the density limit for that lot? Is that the idea?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was what we were talking about.
Yeah, and I think the way that we could talk about this is it's just, I think, because I'm trying to go over my brain, like convincing ways to talk about this because it's inevitable. We'll also talk at city council and I don't want to screw that up. If you couch it as like, the biggest problem to housing in the state from from what I've learned and what I've seen is people who are overhoused and Montpelier certainly has that problem of large house with one or two people in it. And, you know, that that I think contributes so much more to the housing problem than out-of-staters or the secondary rental market or these other things that get blamed. Just from like the data stuff I've seen, some of this is just from the work spent on at the tax department where I work, where what I've seen. So we couch it as like, that's a problem for us. That's a problem. Like what we're proposing in our response to CNU gets directly at that specific problem where we're not having our regulations require people to be overhoused anymore. So within the design review district, we are saying there's no density requirements. You can have a lot of units in a big house and it's not going to be something that's going to stop your application. All of the aesthetic regulations that we're doing, we're going to keep doing. And so you, you know, but but as far as the units and how how many people can be in a building, uh, we're not going to do that. And then outside of it, we're gonna, it's the same problem we're getting at. If there's a big Victorian that's outside of design review district and someone wants to turn it into four units, which I actually, I'm a renter living in one of those right now, by the way, four four units and a big house in the meadows. Then if you're outside of design review, then that's just something we're gonna allow in the in the city. And so it gets at that, both of our suggestions get at that same problem, which we're trying to identify as the biggest problem. And I think if you couch it that way, it's, I believe it's hard to to say no. Does that answer kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah, so density rules wouldn't still. Got it.
Yeah, I modified the document I was keeping to specify that to, because Mike had, Mike said he was a bit fuzzy on that. But I I I modified the notes to say without regard for density, because that was kind of the point. It's we're still requiring it to be on a conforming lot, which I can see as being maybe you're non-conforming for some weird thing. And then we're going to say you can't have four units now, which when there's not going to possibly be a connection. But I get why we would want to make sure it's conforming already, because then it could prevent some worst-case scenarios too. So I don't know. Does anybody have thoughts about that? I didn't really mean to bring it up, but. Okay. Do we have any more things to talk about with the CNU stuff, or do we feel like we we have a plan for that? Yeah. John, you're good with where we're at with that? Ariane?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So so I haven't I haven't modified the notes anymore. We're just going to keep those there. And then we'll use that to work off of when we go to do their proposal formally later. So I'm going to move on on the agenda. And the next thing was to review outline of zoning changes for new amendment, and that's a Mike thing, so. Tell us what that's about, Mike.
All right. So we've got. All right. So at this point, we're not going to go through all these. I was just going to kind of roll through them just to give an idea of what types of things we're looking at. So as we work through applications, we always highlight things that come in as either things we had questions on or things where we know are mistakes. And so we've just started to put together, you know, like, we don't have a definition for top of bank. We've got a couple of riparian setbacks are measured from the top of bank, but we don't have a definition, so we need to add that in and a couple of references that are wrong. We have a a zoning district boundary that needs to be fixed because of a boundary line adjustment. So this is what a lot of what we're doing at this point, and then we'll rearrange them so they're in numerical order. And some of these are just questions. Should we, you know, perhaps exempt unroofed structures such as car chargers? I think that comes in, somebody wants to put in a car charger. And it doesn't, you know, it's not a structure, but does that need a permit? You know, probably not, but we do kind of need to have something in the zoning that would give us the permission that says, no, that does not need a permit. So there are a couple of these types of questions that have come up from time to time that we'll go through. Uh, this was one we talked about last time. So the figure 215, that's that is the use chart. So maybe we should split multifamily into two groups. It's currently five or more is multifamily, but maybe we should have one as multifamily 5 to 14, another one that's multifamily 15 or more. And then the smaller one could be a permitted use for most or all districts while the large one can can keep the same designation. So that goes to the fact that conditional use looks at only three things, you know, municipal services, character of the area and traffic. And so we already know municipal facilities is not right, is not an issue. The state is trying to get communities to stop using character of the area for some of these smaller multifamily. So if we did that, that would get more of them to be permitted uses and not conditional uses. And then the third is traffic and traffic only applies to 75 or more new trips. Well, that's about 15 units creates 75 trips. So we're like, well, why wouldn't, why would we put, you know, an eight-unit multifamily through conditional use, all that extra time, all that extra money, all the extra stuff? We could split it up. So that's just, it's a proposal. And these are all things, we'll go through each one of these. When we've got this all pulled together, we'll go through each one of these individually and make a decision as to whether or not we'll keep it on the list that will eventually get warrant for public hearing. And then we can add in whatever else you guys have. And so you'll see the list, some stuff. You know, it's it's a fairly decent sized list. At this point, most of these are you know, typos, mis- mislabels, a couple of them are more significant. You know, this is one that's up here to talk about street typologies. It's a requirement, doesn't really appear in our zoning. Maybe we should clear up the rules to talk about the street typologies. So that is, that's the list right now. I will, I can send this out to everybody where it is. Where it is now, these are just ideas, but I did want to go and say this is kind of how we build them. For folks who haven't done these zoning amendments in the past, what usually happens at this point is we've got A, we've got B, C is going to be some recommendations or public comments, and we just build these things out. So we'll get public comments on these things and then we'll make decisions on them. You know, and we may get public comments that support them or don't support them. And then eventually planning commission supports this change or planning commission amends this change or whatever. So that's how it usually works. We'll just keep building out these Excel tables. And then eventually make a strikeout copy. Like I said, I didn't want to go into too much detail because it is just a long list and I could drone on for hours on why each one's important. But really, at this point, it's just to go and show you. We have started to pull these things together. We'll get more information. Ultimately, we're not going to warn any hearings until we get that information from Country Club Road. Part of this, it's going to be all prepared. So when Country Club Road says we need to rezone this, this part will be rezoned to mixed-use residential or riverfront or whatever. And this part of it will be rezoned to rez 6,000 or rez 9,000 or rez 3,000, whatever it is, the new zoning designations that would fit, that would be needed to be made in order to make that rezoning possible. And then we can just go through and add those on. But we're, we would be all ready to go because we've already done all these reviews of these typos and small changes like the one we discussed earlier. Does that, does it make sense? I assume everyone would be like, yeah, that just makes sense that we would allow waivers for parking if you're providing or near transit or providing these other bicycle amenities. So those are the types of recommendations we have. And if anybody knows of any others or wants to explore others, we can certainly go through and have more conversations.
So so, Mike, you you think, so we're going to wait to do zoning changes until the country club changes are known? So what's what's the timeline?
We, I think we can start going through them. I will have, you know, we're still working on the city plan. I'm working closely with the SE group. We are still going to have a couple of chapters that we all need to work on to put together. I I don't think you guys have looked at community services. So we still have that chapter due and we still have land use to do. But we also can start having meetings to discuss. I can flesh out what was in that Excel table and get that out to you. And we can start having conversations about those. As you know, we only meet twice a month. If once in April and once in May, we meet to talk about those. You know, by June, we're starting to talk about what Country Club Road, you know, the decisions for Country Club Road should be coming in in June to know what the master plan is going to say. And we'll want to start making those changes. So I don't, I don't think it's too far off to start discussing what's on on these Excel tables and to really start getting ready for for June, which although it seems far away, doesn't take long when you're only meeting twice a month.
Yeah, no, that's soon. Uh, that's great. That's great. This, uh, so so will it be June that we have the meetings on all of the zoning changes?
I think we'll be having a conversation about what the Country Club proposal would be or what the ideas would be for the public hearing. I would bet our zoning, the planning commission zoning public hearing would be either July or August.
Okay, so this zoning, I just, I'm just trying to understand like what what you're thinking of conceptually. That public hearing would involve all of the zoning changes we've been talking about or just the Country Club ones?
All of them. Okay, we'll have meetings to talk about these. But the official warnings that go out in the notices that go out, we start promoting and trying to get a lot of public input on. We could have a public meeting before, have a public hearing before and just talk about things generally to go through and say, hey, these are the ideas we're thinking of. Do you want to, you know, have more of that, but unless we've got something coming up Um, unless we've got something coming up. That's, uh, very specific that we wanna get input on. I think we would put together most of what we wanna do. We would then have a meeting. Among the planning commission to talk about, here's where. The city council came down with their decision on Country Club Road. Here's the staff's recommendation for zoning. Do you guys want to? Have a conversation on that? What do you guys think? You know? Do you think we should zone it for more density even though, you know? They could build it with rez six thousand, but should we make it rez three thousand so it's got more? Infill potential. Um, that type of conversation.
Okay, that sounds good. Is everyone, is everyone okay with that plan to? Basically have our zoning, uh, the goal would be to have our, our zoning hearings all over all this stuff in June?
Yeah, I, I'm good with it. I, I don't know as much as of input as there is into the Country Club Road project that. I would feel like I wanted to monkey around with whatever came out of that process myself, but. In terms of all the zoning changes, yeah, I think we could, it's probably gonna take a few weeks based on what we did last time.
Yeah.
It can be, I mean, how we get there, what they, they'll decide. How many units? I mean, I think the max housing proposal that. Is, is in the conversation is five hundred units on Country Club Road. Um, and how would we break that into different zoning districts? They're, they're not discussing how to break into zoning districts. That would be a piece that would kind of come down to, to you guys and to staff making a recommendation, and there may be various ways of doing it. Um, John, I think is the only one here. We had long conversations on how to zone Saban's pasture. How do we, you know, we knew what the potential was, but do we wanna zone it this way and that would encourage this, or do we wanna zone it that way and that would encourage that and? Eventually the planning commission recommended zoning all of Saban's pasture, all one hundred acres at rez six, six thousand, so that's. Seven. Units an acre roughly. And then the city council threw that out and said, nope, we don't want that. We want high density at the bottom and we'll make that. Riverfront that. You know, one unit per fifteen hundred and the rest of it's gonna be rural, so they changed it. They did something different, so we're, we're probably gonna have a number of. Options to consider. How would we like to zone this? We might be able to do a little bit of this, we might be able to do a little bit of this, and then we'll have to have a discussion of. You know, what the recommendation is, we'll go to public hearing and hear from the public. And the public may disagree with where staff is or may disagree with where you guys are. And we make a decision and send it to council. It's, so it's not always black and white based on, oh, we know this is the development, so we know this is the zoning. Um, there's usually some, some amount of gray that goes into it.
One thing that could be a factor, Mike, just to think about, as. In the summer, people have vacations, we start to maybe have quorum issues. Some weeks. If I remember, I don't know, I think August gets really blown up for us, so.
Yep, then it may, it may be one that we try to have some meetings and some hearings and it may get pushed, I, it. More than once. You know, and I think you've, you've been here Kirby for a bunch of these zoning updates. We've pushed the hearing until September. Basically because it's too, it's too hard to get hearings and, and hear from people or we'll, we'll have it in August. It goes to city council and gets blown up because everybody comes back from vacation and is mad.
I'm, I'm a little concerned about delaying things too much because we don't want. We don't want the city plan getting like delayed. We don't, you know. So just, just since we're on the topic, do people know, like, is anybody? Is anybody going to be unavailable and for a big chunk of June that they're aware of now? How about July? It's possible that I won't be around the first week of July, which is shouldn't be a meeting week anyway. But then August is also, is gonna be some unavailability for me.
I, I'm out in August, the. I'd have to look at the dates, but probably when we'd have a meeting.
Same, yeah.
For August, John?
Yep.
Yeah, that happens pretty much annually. We. August gets just gone.
We'll sort them out and cancel meetings as, as appropriate and. Like I said, we'll fit stuff in for, from a zoning standpoint for, for Country Club Road. Like we said, Country Club Road is looking to build in twenty twenty-four, so. As long as we're done, you know, by, by Christmas, we'll be fine. I wouldn't wanna be having zoning hearings at city council. During budget, which starts in December, so I would, whatever we do, as long as it gets to city council for October. I would be, I'd be happy.
If, if, if for some reason the, the deliberative process with the Country Club project gets way delayed. Um, would you be okay, Mike, if we just did the other zoning before that, just to get it out of the way?
Yeah, we can do that. I was just trying, because, because it takes, it's such a heavy lift.
I get it, yeah.
Uh, to do the zoning updates, we usually try to lump as many of them together as we can.
And we're expect, we're also expecting hearing, well, we're, well, we're actually hoping for hearings in what, the next couple of months for the city plan, right?
Yep.
So, so then there'll be that whole process in parallel. Okay, we can always have some hearings on non-Mondays, like if we're gonna have an unavailability. I mean, it's an exciting time for the modular planning commission. We've. Got. Major zoning changes, major city plan overhaul. But it might mean scheduling some hearings on some non. Planning Commission nights. Um, I think that that could be an option to, to get more stuff done. Okay. Don't lose, don't lose hope. What we do is very important and your time is well spent. Okay, what do we, do you wanna, did you wanna have anything, which, did you wanna have anything else or did you have anything else to say? Sorry, uh, Mike about zoning changes?
Nope, I just wanted to let you know, we were, we were starting them up. I might. Organize them and get, you might get an email on them, but don't feel pressured that there's any big. Timing issue on it. It's just, if I've got them and people wanna start looking through them. Then you'd have, have what we have so far.
Okay, that, I mean, from what I saw that preview just gave us, like, that seems like all. It seemed almost all technical housekeeping and then. I don't know, I didn't see a single issue that.
There'll be, there'll be two or three policy ones that are in there that are. Kind of general.
Okay, so, so yeah.
So, so even though we're gonna send the CNU stuff under like separate cover with the policy reasons why. Shouldn't we also have the, the technical language that would go into the zoning? Right, Mike? Shouldn't you, you guys write that?
Yeah, that would eventually end up on, on that list. I just showed that Excel table. We would have one that would say, you know. Usually what I end up with is, is the number. The, the next cell would have the very specific change. Of what is being proposed, and then the next cell is kind of an explanation of what it is and. Some of them might go, go and say, C. CNU AARP. Recommendation memo from PC. Um, and it might refer back to that specific discussion that we, we just had. Previously.
Okay, that sounds good. Um. Maybe as far as for next time, um, will we have some more chapters?
I, I, I think, I was trying to remember on my notes, cuz I.
Mentioned community services might be all we have left.
Seventh. Uh, so the twenty-seventh is, that's March twenty-seventh, yes, or April tenth. So when I talked with them. I think they're expecting to have a bigger. Rollout. On April tenth, so that's one month, they're gonna. Show you a whole bunch of new ones, but we did wanna go and have, uh, on the agenda to have a conversation on the twenty-seventh. Of some. Templates. Um, of a couple of them that are done, just so you guys can get a chance to sit down and say, yeah, this is, this is, you know. Exactly where we were hoping this was gonna go now that they've put a bunch of work into it, but they've got. Like six or eight of them going right now. And we're working on, working through them, but we just wanna make sure we get one last time where we bring you guys a template to go through and say. Here's the template. We've made all the changes, made all the final stuff. What do you guys think of? Because everything is gonna look like this one and then. And saying that, they've already have like six or seven of them that are, that are mostly built out.
Okay, well, that's, that's, yeah, it sounds like they've been busy. So, so you're saying at our next meeting, uh, SE is gonna check in with us?
Yep, SE will check in on the twenty-seventh and then they'll, they'll be most of the agenda on the twentieth. Or the, excuse me, the tenth, April tenth.
Oh, they'll be most of it on the tenth, and then we'll be kind of done with as far as our suggestions for SE group.
Yep, and then we still have a conversation on community services and land use.
Right. I think we should do community services or land use next time. On the twenty-seventh, in addition to SE group checking in. I know, I know you're buried by the country club, which I get it. Um, yeah, I think it's just for purposes of just trying to, to move it along, the city plan along.
Yep, I'll see if I've got three quarters of community services done. Um, there were just a couple of chapters that. Couple of sections because community services is seven different things. I've already done recreation, I've already done parks, I've already done. Senior center, I've already done cemeteries. Uh, I think what's left is the homelessness. The conflict assistance, which is out of CJC and. There's one more. But there's, there's, there's smaller pieces, oh, uh, childcare. So those are the three, those are the three pieces that are left. Um, so if I can finish those, then we've got those, those are the implementation strategy. I haven't written chapters, so. Obviously, as many of you know, there's two, both pieces.
Uh, well, if you, um, for one thing, if you don't get all of the pieces, that's okay. We could do the bulk of it. Um, and then. Um, if you can get like just a like sketch of a chapter, if you can get that posted in the next week or so, I'll try to go over it also and then. At least we can have. Um, I'll try to help you and make sure that that's ready to go. Um, but if we can, if we can do that, we'll be in good shape and then, so when we get done with SE group. An early April, late April meeting can hopefully be Lanchi's plan. And. And that's what, uh, planning commissioners, you should be thinking about the land use plan. Maybe, you know, the land use plan is bringing the whole thing together. The whole plan together, so if folks could get, um, acquainted in the next couple of months with. All of the chapters that we have, especially the big ones. You know, we're gonna be tasked with. Unlike most times, you know, we've got suggestions coming from somewhere else. We gotta come up with from scratch the land use plan chapter, but I'm sure Mike's gonna help us a ton. But, um, but we're not gonna have some other committee bringing it to us like we normally get, you know. Um, that's a big advantage that we normally have, that we won't have. Uh. But the overarching big land use plan ideas, we're gonna need to develop out. And so people can start thinking about that and bring those ideas. I think, I mean, we, the things we tend to always say are probably gonna be things like walkable community, et cetera, but. But yeah, start thinking about that for late April. We had the solar shading issue too, which is, which is gonna be part of the zoning stuff. So we'll probably, whenever we have a meeting coming up that we do have some empty space on. We'll revisit the solar shading.
Okay, cuz if we wanna add that to the zoning amendment, then we'll have to have that conversation of if it's gonna get added on again or not.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm assuming it, it will be. Um. John put in a ton of work like on that, that we need to, 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 to revisit and. I don't think the city, I didn't, like, I sent it to the city council when he did it last time, but it was like they, I don't know. It was after they'd already received it. I don't, I don't know how much attention was paid to it. Anyway, solar shading issue, uh, is another zoning thing, so we actually kind of, so we have like four categories of zoning things. Uh, okay, so it sounds like we have a plan. Does anybody, does everybody feel good? Did they follow that conversation about what to expect over the next couple of months? If, if we don't have any, any questions, then we can move on to reviewing the minutes and adjourning. Go ahead, Maria.
I was just wondering if there's, might be a chance to meet in person in the next. Two or three months. It'd be nice to actually meet everybody. Um, and I'm not sure. If the commission's always been remote. But it would be nice to just have like. Before we move into like public hearings, just to kind of. Meet fellow commissioners.
Um, that's a good idea. What do other people think?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Mike looks lonely. He needs. Needs more people there. Do we wanna try to target a week right now? March twenty-seventh. April tenth.
April tenth might be a tricky one because we all will want to have our computers up because SE group is gonna be going through their. All the web, websites and all the changes, and so if you're here, you'd be looking at the screen. Um, which isn't the end of the world, but it's certainly. Probably a lot easier to be looking at your computer screen that night, but any of the other nights I think would work.
It's a good point. I've gotten used to doing a bunch of stuff on my computer during the meeting. Which I didn't used to bring a computer to meetings, so. I'll be less productive when I'm there in person, but that's okay. I'll figure something out. Uh, do you guys wanna say next time then, the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, let's do it.
SE group's gonna check in with us and what was the other thing we said we're gonna do? We're gonna. Hopefully look at the, uh, the facilities.
Yep. Yep, there'll either be.
Or that, or community services, I mean.
Yep, community services.
Yeah. All right, optional, obviously, but. We're gonna, we're gonna try to. See people in the flesh. Next time.
All this social pressure all of a sudden, you know?
Gonna drag Aaron out.
No, no, I'm happy to come. I'll be there, I'll be there.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's totally optional, but only losers will be remote, just so you know, so, you know. No pressure. Uh, okay, so let's, let's take a look at the minutes. Um. Mike sent a separate email, by the way, the first, the first one, something went wrong and it wasn't the right.
Just grabbed the wrong things.
They'll look at Mike's newest email to review the minutes and I'll take a motion to approve when people are ready.
I would note for December twelfth that it's Peter Kelman with a K.
Okay, that's a note to change.
It's a bit of an aside, but I strongly approve the use of the verbiage beef up standards in the January ninth minutes.
Not a legal term.
I think it's just professional.
Can you unbief them?
Lean, right, streamlined?
That's a, that's a DB thing.
So I move, um, approval of the December 12th, January 9th, January 23rd, and February 13th minutes with Mike's change on the December 12th.
Okay, so we have a motion. Uh, do we have a second?
I second.
Second from Gabe. Does anyone need more time?
Well, what, is there still an agenda? Am I looking at the right, is the 12th still an agenda, or is that minutes? I'm sorry, maybe I'm looking at the wrong. Is this at 5:26? PM that you sent us, Mike?
Yeah, the December, the December one's an agenda, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, good call, Brian.
Oh, did I still send another?
Yeah. Yeah, you're just keeping us honest, Mike. Yeah, we got 2:13, 1:23, and 1:09 minutes.
Let me see what I've got here now. Wonder if somebody saved the agendas in the minutes box, and that's why I keep grabbing the wrong one. He said that December 1.
Yeah, December 12th.
Very annoying. Now I can open this one. All right, we've tried to send that to you again. I guess I could have probably just shared screen on it too.
Anybody receive it? I did not get it, Mike.
Nope, all right, let me.
Yeah, just share the screen. You still have a motion in the se, a motion in a second, by the way. Um, left to amend the motion if we find an issue here. This has become intriguing.
Where am I? There I am. Share that. All right. You able to see that? There was my Peter Hellman. Actually, it looks like we'd have to also strike, there were no members of the public in attendance, so we can strike that too, cuz Peter obviously made comments.
Um, Ariane, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, I, I both didn't, do I have to say to what? I've, I'm losing the thread here, sorry.
I, I don't think it needs to be amended cuz it's based on my comments regarding these minutes anyway, so.
Okay, I, I mean, yeah, her specific wording was to, to do whatever Mike said. So we're gonna, so, so, so everyone, so everyone understands the motion is to strike the first to strike this in us, there were no members of the public in attendance, and to correct Peter Kellyman's name in the December 12 minutes. Um, so that's our motion. We had a second for Gabe. Those in favor of approving the minutes with those changes, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Minutes done.
Thank you.
And do we have a motion to adjourn? Slightly early. Brian's thinking though.
To adjourn? Well.
Okay, motion from Ariane, second from John. We're adjourned. See you guys in two weeks in person.
Hey, guys.
Potentially.